Good evening, I'll call this being an inaugural city council to order. If you'll please stand for our invocation and prayers.
Let us pray. Creator of all, your gifts and your blessings are so many, and we are grateful people. Give us the spirit of compassion and fairness and consistency, and let the blessings of your gifts be shared among all of us. Guide the council in making its decisions as we pray in your holy name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Kielin, go roll, please.
Carrie Hodge, Ward 1, here. Jay Stepp, Ward 2.
Here.
Louis Tonsmire, Ward 3.
Here.
Lindsay McDaniel, Ward 4. Diane Tate, Ward 5.
Here.
Lori Pruitt, Ward 6.
Here.
Thank you, Connie. Before we do that, I do want to mention, obviously Louis is not here, or Lindsay. Louis is really not here. Lindsay's not here, but I can tell you, he's under the weather, unable to be here, wanted desperately to be here, and I just was not physically able to do so. So, hopefully he'll be on the bed very soon. We do have our first quarter of business, the approval of council meeting minutes. We have before your council, three different meetings that were held, one August 5th at 9:00 a.m., one on August 7th at 9:00 a.m., and then our regular council meeting, which was held on August 7th at 7:00 p.m. If you would choose, you can put all those in one motion to approve all three, or separately you can choose. Either way, you've got these well-advanced tonight, and you've had an opportunity to review them, and if there's any additions, deletions, or corrections, you can make them known at this time.
Mayor, I didn't see any additions or corrections, and I make a motion to approve August 5th, August 7th at 9:00, and August 7th at 7:00.
I have the motion.
Second.
I have the motion, the second, all in favor of the case by saying aye.
Aye.
And the minute to approve unanimously. We do have a number of items on the agenda tonight. We do, however, have an item that was tabled at our last meeting. I know there's some folks here that are interested in that item, so out of respect for their child, I would ask council, if they seem, deem it necessary, appropriate to, I'll make a motion to take that item off and give it to the top of the agenda.
So move.
Second.
All in favor of the case by saying aye?
Aye.
And there you have it. We have a special use permit, SU 14-02, and Mr. Menino, if you'll get us started with that, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you had mentioned, this case was tabled at the last meeting. There have been really no changes since the last meeting. If you recall, this was recommended for approval by the Planning Commission at their regular scheduled July meeting. Their recommendation was based on the general standards set forth in the zoning ordinance for special use permits. And again, as you had mentioned, it was tabled. There were some differences in the last meeting, and as far as I know, nothing has changed.
Okay. Any questions from Mr. Menino at this point? Thank you, sir. I'll open the public hearing relative to this case. I do want to say, on the front end, we're going to look at this, and Mr. Archer's going to be our timekeeper. We're going to allow up to seven minutes apiece for each side. If you don't feel compelled to take all those minutes, but certainly where you're as long as you need to be, as I think you could attest from our last gathering. I do want this to plow new ground, as I've asked before. If you have something new to add, then we certainly want to gather your comments. And that being said, I'll open up the public hearing relative to the case, SU 14-02. Anybody wishing to step forward, speak for or against, may do so at this time. And once you step forward, if you'll please give your name and address for our court, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council. My name is Shep Hilton. I'm here on behalf of Emma Templeton, who's here as well. I do have some new things to talk about. This has been, it's weighed heavily on me over the last little bit. I've grown to really have a fondness for Ms. Templeton, and this has weighed on me, and I've thought a lot about it. Mr. Holtman contacted me, and I've enjoyed a nice relationship with him through the course of this thing. He contacted me, and we talked to see if there was anything we could come up with. He volunteered, although I know this wouldn't be something that the council would make a matter of a condition, but he volunteered to make sure that his employees would park in the parking spaces that are proposed, that would be most closely, will be adjacent to Ms. Templeton's property. That way, there would be less in and out and that sort of a thing. I told him how much I appreciated that, and genuinely did. Spoken with my client, and frankly, we've just racked our brains trying to think of things that we could do to compromise, and just can't come up. The only thing that we've compromised, that we had suggested, was perhaps a doing away with those parking spots next to her property, or making those parallel parking spaces. Mr. Holtman, I don't think that's a financially viable alternative for him, according to him, and I understand we're all in the business to improve our business. But the thing that I wanted to talk about tonight is something that I've only in the last sort of hour really come up with, and that is, I think that this is, that the application is inappropriate. Not inappropriate from a fairness or standard, but actually inappropriate in that, as I look at the application, it is an application for the expansion of a non-conforming use. That's what I understand that this is. When I began to look through the city ordinance on this, I kind of started scratching my head, trying to figure out really where this thing fits. Because when, for the love of food, is the owner of the property. When they got the property back in 2005, they took the property in three different tracts. One of those separate tracts is the property in question, and that separate tract has a house on it. It's a rental unit. It's a lot. It is a residential lot. It's not a non-conforming use. It is in fact a conforming use. It's zone R7, as I understand it, and what we have there is an existing conforming use. So that, we're not talking about the expansion of a non-conforming use, we're talking about tearing down a conforming use, and then adding a special use in there. It's inappropriate, in my opinion, based on my reading of the statute, for several reasons, not the least of which is, the, in R7, there are some special uses that are available. You can in fact, there are some special uses, such as accessory apartments, amateur radio transmitter, actually that's not one, bed and breakfast, clubs or lodges, daycare facilities, group homes, there's the list, y'all familiar with them. On that list is not listed either a parking lot or a restaurant. So that this particular special use would not be allowed in R7. And it's not the expansion of an existing non-conforming use. If it were the expansion of an existing non-conforming use, which again, I'm pretty sure it's not, then there are a set of standards that apply to that. Looking here at section, and I'm not sure which one this goes under, whether it's 18.1, 2, or 3. It has a structure on it. I'm believing that's going to be 18.3, which is non-conforming use of structures. And it says there in B, "An existing non-conforming use of a structure should not be changed to another non-conforming use that generates more automobile or truck traffic, creates more noise, vibration, smoke, dust, or fumes, is a more intensive use of structures than the existing non-conforming use, and is in any way a greater nuisance to the adjoining properties than the existing non-conforming use." Now, I don't think there's any question that if we put a parking lot there, you're going to have more truck traffic, more noise, more vibration, more dust, more fumes, more intensive use of that structure than what's there currently. And it is most definitely a greater nuisance to the adjoining properties than the existing non-conforming use. So, I think that the council will be out of order if this is approved, because I think it's just wrong. It's not, it's not a correct use of the application. It's not right. Because it's not right, I don't think it can be approved. So, that's the new ground I have. I'm certainly willing to field any questions about that, or I'll be happy to rest and save whatever balance of time I have for, to close.
Got one minute.
Okay, I'll save that.
Any questions at this point? Thank you for your comments, Mr. Holtman. Anybody else wishing to step forward, speak for or against, may do so at this time.
Courtney Holtman, owner of Moore's Market, 227 and 221 Fight Street. I'm not sure about all the ordinance that he just spoke of, so I can't, I don't know any of that information. But I doubt that the Planning Committee would approve it to come to council if they didn't take that already into consideration. I have had a couple conversations with Mr. Hilton. I first contacted Mrs. Templeton back on July 29th to see if we could come to a neutral ground to meet here at City Hall, one of the conference rooms with Randy. And at that time, I was advised that, you know, I would hear from their lawyer. On the 5th of August, I did receive a phone call from Mr. Hilton. That was a day and a half before the last city council meeting, with my catering schedule and so forth, we were unable to meet with beforehand. Last Wednesday, the 13th, I called Mr. Hilton and offered to make the property line a double fence on both sides, and to designate the certain area in concern, you know, bedroom windows or what have you, to be employee parking, so there'd be less in and out. And then until 6:04 this afternoon, or this evening, I had not heard back from Mr. Hilton. I believe I have put forth the effort to try to come to an understanding, an agreement. And, you know, I've tried to put as many options out there that I possibly can, in reference to taking it parallel. As a business owner that owns the property that they operate, most restaurants are on a lease agreement, you know, rental, you know, I made the investment, I own it, I pay the property taxes on it, and it's a big undertaking. To eliminate eight parking spots, it takes the, takes the cost per spot, I guess, from 1,300 to two, over $2,000 a parking spot, which is a lot of $10 lunches. I did send some photographs the other day to, just showing what parking is like on Fight Street during lunches, dinners, and it can, it can be a little congested in the area, but I'm trying to make the investment to improve it. And I guess that's all I can say at this point.
Okay, any questions? Thank you. Anyone else wishing to step forward, speak for or against, may do so at this time.
Hi. My name is Mitch Mitchell. I live at 125 Mitchell Avenue. Courtney's Restaurant. The whole idea here that we're looking at is the fact that we want to take traffic off the streets and put it into a parking lot. The point is, is that the traffic's already there, the parking's already there, the noise is already there, the fumes are already there, the trucks are already there. So all of the things that you may consider not there. Mary and I went to the restaurant on Sunday to have dinner. We were there about 5:00, and we looked in the restaurant, and there was no one there. But the parking lot was full. And we noticed in the parking lot that there were three vehicles who were visiting neighbors across the street. We also noticed in the parking lot that there were two families who were visiting the park, which I think are awful, wonderful things. But the problem is, is that the traffic that Mary and I had to use, the place that we had to park, was on the road. So as I was there, and Mary was there, we had friends join us, that's there, down the road, and then we had other people join us. So the point is, the traffic, the fumes, the noise, all of that is already there. All Courtney's trying to do, and Moore's Market is trying to do, is accommodate that so that it's in a place where it's less hazardous, and can be confined, and can be safe for the community and the customers of Moore's Market.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to step forward, speak for or against this application, may do so at this time?
I'll use my last minute. If you, I believe if you approve this, you're doing it in violation of the city's ordinance. I believe it's wrong, setting the city up for liability. And if you're going to do it, may look after Ms. Templeton. There is, she's a good woman. She's lived in that house over 50, it's over 60 years, lived there. Raised her family there, and now she's taking care of her disabled granddaughter there. And this is going to cause her a problem, period. If you're going to do it, please look after it the best way you can. I've done all I can do so far. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Holtman.
Mayor, I have a question of Randy, please.
Yes.
Randy, something I didn't clearly understand, and I'd like to, is point out to me, Mrs. Templeton's current fence, and what is being proposed with fencing. Can you explain that and make sure?
Currently, there's a chain link fence that runs, I believe, along this entire line right here. And I think it's Courtney's fence, it's on there, and what he is proposing is a six-foot, two-sided fence that'll run from 20 feet, starting 20 feet back, here all the way down to this line, with five feet of landscaping in that strip right there.
Is that, does that the extent of the fence, or does it also run parallel to the backyard? Does it encompass the Moore's?
The proposed fence there runs from the, basically the sidewalk, six foot, all the way to the back, with the old jump right there with the pointer, to the back of Moore's Market.
So you're going to go all the way back to right there?
Yeah.
That's what I wanted to understand.
And it would eliminate, I mean, presently there is a chain link fence there, so it would eliminate that.
And that parking, that area is already used for parking, correct?
Correct.
Anybody else wishing to step forward, speak for or against, may do so at this time? And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing portion. Council, you have it before you. You have a few different options that you're all well aware of.
Mayor, I'd like to say thank you to the council, because we did table it two weeks ago. I think that showed we were giving a lot of consideration to everyone that spoke and brought ideas to the table, and that was a motion I made, and I appreciate council going along with it. I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to try a motion, to see if it'll pass.
Okay.
To consider Mrs. Templeton, some of your concerns, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this with at least a seven-foot fence higher, and a lapped fence that would keep any light out. In other words, it looks the same on both sides. Also, I'd like landscaping to be considered, that would reduce light and noise, and I think, I'm not the expert in that, Mayor, but I think those things are out there. So I would like for that to be considered in the landscaping ordinance.
Is that your motion?
It is.
Okay. I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
A motion, a second. All in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Now, out of consideration of those that are here, I'll give you a couple minutes, if you're certainly welcome to stay, if you have somewhere else you'd like to be. We'll give you a moment to go on to your evening, and thank you for coming to our council meeting.
Thank you. We think we did the best we could do. You were very helpful.
The next item of business before council is relative to the Cloverleaf redesign project, Mr. Sanders.
This item is, there's two documents that need signing concerning a signal that GDOT wants to include in their new project at the Cloverleaf. They're redoing that interchange, and they will be installing a signal on US 411 at the 41 ramps that come off 411. The reason for the signal is primarily site distance, because the bridge over 41, if you're going north on 411, out of town, there's, you come down the hill, and the bridge on 41 prevents you from seeing that intersection that's on the other side of the interchange. So, that's the reason for this signal. It'll be in the proximate location where the existing signal is now, that where State Route 20 ties into 411. Of course, State Route 20 won't be tying into 411 at that location anymore, but that's the general area where the signal is going to be. The signal is included in the project cost. It's 100% funded by GDOT. These documents are just, since it is in the city limits, they want the mayor to sign a request for the signal, which shows that you concur with the need for a signal at that location. GDOT doesn't like to put signals where, if the locals don't concur with it. And the other document is a communication, communication services agreement, so that if that signal is interconnected with other signals, we would be responsible for providing the, arranging for it to be able to talk with the other signals, which is standard. They don't pay for that. So, we'd like to request that you approve the mayor to sign any related, these documents and any other documents that are related to this signal installation.
Okay. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor of the case by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Continue on with Mr. Jones. You have the next couple or three, don't you?
Yes, sir. Good evening, everyone. First up, we have our water treatment plant filter rehab. We've completed this project, and during the course of that, we had a cost overrun of $754.60 on a over half million dollar project. But that being the case, we would ask that you approve that slight overrun, so that we can close this project out and move along.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor of the case by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Continue.
Next up, same issue that Tommy was talking about. We have some 24-inch and 36-inch water main that we need to move out of DOT for their improvements that they're making to the intersection there. Took bids for that work on July 24th, had 12 bidders. The low bid was Unity Construction at $1,153,456. Would recommend approval of that job to Unity at that price. They have been recommended by our engineer, seemed to be a completely competent contractor.
Okay.
Question here.
Go ahead.
Bob, I have a question, please.
Yes.
On the letter from the project manager, it said that Unity Construction was deemed pre-qualified to bid this project. Were all the people pre-qualified?
That's right, yes.
All of them?
They had to show that they had done projects of this size and scope to be allowed to bid.
So they didn't even make a bid unless they were pre-qualified?
That's right.
And we had thought that this would be about a million, right?
We did.
So it's a little over.
That's right.
And we've got a pool of how much to do this in another project?
I believe there's $300,000 in the budget for the other part right there, tractor supply.
Okay.
And that bid came under what we budgeted, so there, there may be a balance there, but I'd hate to promise that.
Just want you all to be aware of the fact that that continues to be tight, and this is over what we thought it would be, but it's a good bid.
It's not a project we really chose to do or wanted to do, but it's got one of those we, what's a million?
It's a signal and a pipeline.
Any other discussion or questions about this?
Make a motion to approve the low bid with Unity Construction?
Second.
All in favor of the case by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Last one for you, Bob.
This is our annual chemical purchase. There's, I believe, 10 chemicals here from eight different bidders. These are all of our chemicals that we use to treat the water. We do this to kind of save all of us some headache, some of these chemicals we order with great frequency. This sort of keeps us from cluttering up the agenda. This is something we've done for several years. I'll save you the chemistry lesson and what all this stuff is. We bid them out, and they're proposed to you in unit prices. Those prices are held good for a period of one year. If there were to be any price change for any reason, someone goes out of business, can't honor the price, we would come back to you and make you aware that this is what happened, and here's the new price. The only other thing I'd call your attention to, there is one item on this list that is a sole source supplier. So it's, we get their price, and that's what we use. But other than that, everything was competitively bid.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor of the case by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael, you've got the next item, please.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Come before you guys, asking for approval for us to be able to buy 910 feet of four-and-a-half inch pipe, and 660 feet of two-and-three-eighth inch steel pipe. We had put this out for bids, had five bids went out, we only got two back, three null bidders. Low bidder was Majunkin Red Man Corporation at $9,818.50.
I should ask you this during the work session, you feel good about that quote?
Yes, sir.
And you feel, okay.
Yeah, it's pretty good.
Okay. Because we only got two back, is why it was, I'm saying you still feel like that was competitively bid, and we're getting a good price.
Yes, sir.
Good, all right.
This is all part of the same row project that Bob was talking about.
It is. It absolutely is.
Are we?
This is part of the interchange up here.
We're doing this ourselves?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor of the case by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. You got the next one, too, please.
The other one was for odorant purchase. This is for mercaptan. This is our stinky stuff that we put into the gas to give it that rotten egg smell. We had recently bought 200 gallons just to get us through. We have a sole provider for this, and that is GPM Equipment Sales Incorporated. This stuff is hard to come by. We have to get it when we can, and we're asking you to let us buy 510 gallons on the next trip through, and it's going to be $12,495.
Question, Mayor.
Yes, Mayor.
Michael, how long have the feds required us to put this in?
Oh, I guess forever. I mean, I'm sure they've been doing it here since we started selling natural gas back in the 50s. I mean, that's, otherwise you wouldn't know it was in the room with you.
Okay. Any other questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor of the case by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Chief Culpepper, you have the next item, please, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. The police department stores quite a bit of data, both in its mobile data system, its data management system, and its video server. All three of those servers are at max capacity, and it's beginning to affect the service capability of those systems. So we started looking at, how can we upgrade and replace those? And the solution we have come up with through our fiber com department with the city And the solution we have come up with through our fibercom department with the city and our IT manager is that we want to put that into a virtual environment with our, with our records management and our video system. Mobile data system, that system is not compatible with a virtual environment, so we will need to buy a physical server for that, but everything else will migrate over into a, a virtual environment with the fibercom system that has the capacity to, to sell us that. There is a fee to migrate over some of our video to this virtual system through the supplier that we use through Digital Ally. The total cost is $15,300. This is a necessary expense for our operation. We will pay for it out of asset forfeiture and ask for your approval.
Questions for the chief on this item?
Where exactly is the virtual environment going to be located? Who's your supplier? Where's, where the, their server is at?
Here.
Is it through?
Let's see. It's fibercom, yes. Fibercom. They, they have the space available, yes. We have coordinated with them.
Okay. All right. Just, that's kind of highly sensitive data that we want, don't want to, someone's cloud in India.
And we have, we have verified that all those systems are very well compatible with a virtual network.
Thank you. Any other questions?
That was my question.
And if not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor, Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Major De Prima, you have the next one, please, sir.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you. This is for the speed detection permit renewal. It's set to expire at the end of this year. In the process of getting that permit renewed, we'll need for the mayor to sign some documentation as the department's public safety provides that to us, so we're asking for council to approve authorization for the mayor to sign that when it's provided.
Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor, Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Before we get to the monthly financial report, there are two items that need to get added to the agenda. Counsel, entertain a motion to add those two items.
Motion to add?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Connie, I'll let you sort that one out. But, but everybody's in favor of adding those two items, so if Chief McCann, if you'll come forward and talk to us about your item, please, sir.
Mayor and council, this is a request to replace an undercover vehicle. This vehicle is used by our lead investigator, who's assigned to the DEA task force. His current vehicle is a 2008 with over 137,000 miles on it. Sent out 15 bids, got four bids back. The low bid is Robert Laura Dodge for $30,750. I added $2,000 in to equip this vehicle. I don't anticipate spending that much money, but I wanted to have it just in case. We plan on using the lights, siren, et cetera, off of his old vehicle. This purchase will be made with federal asset forfeiture money.
Okay. Bad guys buying our stuff.
Yes, sir.
Good. All right. Any questions on this item? Okay, we'll entertain a motion.
Send it.
Second.
All in favor, Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Ms. Bolander, you have the final item before we get to the finance report, please.
Good evening, Mayor and council. This is just the invoice renewing our web hosting agreement with the company. It's $12,326.63.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor, Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Rebecca. And now, Mr. Renter, if you'll give us the financial report.
Honorable Mayor and council, we'll be looking at the financial report for 2004, June 2014 and comparing it to June 2013. Please keep in mind that these are the year-end close, the, the year-end close process is still in, in, not being completed, and we will, we will still be making changes and entries as we go along through that process. So, these are not, these are unaudited and are not the final information. In the general fund, revenues increased over last year by $984,000. Expenses increased by $1.8 million. This is due mainly to increased personnel, operating expenses, along with the payment of the TANs. The TANs actually netted down to, coming out of the general fund, $772,000. Three years of revenue that I look at, the local office sales tax, we had a decrease of roughly $9,000 from 2000, June 2013. Police fines and forfeitures had a decrease of $121,000. Billing permits and inspections had an increase of roughly $29,000. In the water and super fund, revenues increased over last year by $563,000. Expenses increased by $4.2 million. This increase is due mainly to increased debt service and capital expenses. If we take out the major bond issued capital expenses, we would have basically a, a $4.8 million decrease in expenses in the water fund. In the gas fund, revenues increased over last year by $3.8 million. Expenses increased by $4.7 million. This is due to increased personnel, operating, and cost of gas and capital expenses. In the electric fund, revenues increased by $545,000. Expenses increased by $160, I'm sorry, $118,000. This is due to increased, decreased personnel expenses, operating expenses, and capital expenses coupled with an increase in cost of purchasing electricity. In the stormwater fund, revenues decreased from last year by $42,000. Expenses decreased by $270,000. This is due to decreased, I'm sorry, due to increased operating expenses offset by decreased capital expenses. In the solid waste fund, revenues decreased from last year by $135,000 and expenses decreased by $128,000 due to increased operating expenses offset by decreased capital expenses. And finally, in the fiber optics fund, revenues increased by $278,000. Expenses have decreased by $8,000. This is due mainly to decreased capital expenses coupled with increased personnel and operating expenses. That is my report. Again, this is unaudited, and many changes will be, will be, we'll be making throughout the next month or so.
Okay. Just a couple notes. General fund is out around by the amount of the TANs that we use to pay off the public safety building. As we've mentioned before, the big hole in the water fund, that's capital that we've spent, Tennessee Street, Etowah. We had money set aside from a bond that we had last year. If you recall, last year, that all hit cash and it made it look like there was a large surplus there. Now, it's showing the negative. When the auditors get in, close this out, it'll be close to, close to even, don't you think?
Yes.
Of course, there's a little hole in electric, and we've, we've juggled some of those rates within the last month, Don did. And the cash that's shown on another sheet that had been drawn down to about six and a half million, that's because we were funding the water improvements out of cash, and we hold some bond, bond funds across. If you look at the unrestricted cash, it's back up to about 8.9 million. That's the, that's the house and whiteboards on there.
Okay, just to clarify, the, when you say we're going to, a water fund, if you pull out all the capital expenses and increases, you said we're going to run even. You meant on the water fund itself, not on the capital projects?
Well, we had money set aside to fund the capital projects, so it, it should run close to even.
I kind of assumed that one would. I was wondering about the water fund itself.
The capital is in the water fund.
Pull that out. Water generally?
It'll run close to even.
Even?
Yes.
That's what you said, but I wasn't sure I was following you right.
That's what I said.
The capital expenses were really messing with my.
Well, just because we account for a cash basis, and that's what these monthlies are, and they, they don't show all the stuff that you've got set aside to pay for.
Right.
I'll be glad to sit down with you and go over all the entries if you want me to at the end of the year.
That'd be great, yeah. Let's do that.
I'd love to sit in with you, but I'll be busy then.
Sock, are we?
Thank you, Tom. Any other business that needs to come forward, council, this evening?
Mayor, just one thing. This is the 11th anniversary of the Booth Museum, and it is Saturday, and a real asset to this community, and I hope people will take advantage of it.
Absolutely.
Greg, you're not going to come up here and talk about the pioneer days? Man, we got our parking spots. I'm just going on a date with my wife, but, yeah, go ahead.
We think you're, you know, to finish off, you ought to have an insurance meeting next. You can take her, too.
No.
Yes, we have Pioneers Days that starts a week from tomorrow. I think that date is the 29th. It goes Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and Monday, and there is a fireworks display Monday night, and we'd like everybody to come on out and have a good time. Thank you.
Greg?
It seemed to me first Friday, on the third Friday, went very well.
It did. Tara's not here to get that platitude, but yeah, everybody involved with that, that went real well. Had a good time. I like, I didn't know you were that good of a dancer.
I practiced.
I knew.
Motion to disprove?
Everybody got their say? I've got a motion to adjourn.
All right.
Adjourned. Did not get a harumph out of that guy?